Everyone. Good morning. The City of Boston's zoning board of appeal hearing for August 8, 2023 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen, and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click on the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Please do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call upon you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the meeting. Okay. Mr. Stenbridge.
Present. Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Ms. Berberaza.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Shepherd.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Excellent. I will turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Oh, ma'am, she had a muscle here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. Your name was dropped off. Mr. Valencia.
Present. Good morning, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, now I will turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge. Apologies.
Um, yes, good. First, over to business is the approval of the hearing minutes from May 9 of this year.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 9.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yep.
Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Next, I'll defer to our attorney, Javier Salas. Some information on extensions to be heard at 9:30 AM.
Thank you, Secretary Stenbridge. I'll be reading the extensions into the record for this portion of the hearing. The first two cases are first-time requests, and they'll be read together and can just be made as a simple blanket motion. For the first case, it's BOA 1186247 with the address of 715 River Street. The second case is BOA 1186589 with the address of 64 Tolman Street. I believe the applicant and the representative are present, but we do not take due notice of their first request for an extension.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Uh, we need an extension to Javier. Is it August 8, 2024?
Uh, yes.
Can someone make that motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the extension to August 8, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yep.
Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Next case is BOA 788662 with the address of 587 Albany Street. Uh, I believe there is Attorney Jeff Drago who is here, the representative of them.
Yes.
Please say your name and address.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with a business address of 11 Beacon Street, here on behalf of the applicant at 587 Albany Street. This was an approved zoning project that had been under a previous extension. There was a outside lawsuit that had to be settled. That got settled, and we are currently in working with the South End Landmarks, a district review process, and we're close to finishing that with them. So there were some changes that had to be made, which affected the time period. But we are pushing forward, so we are seeking a one-year extension.
Thank you, Mr. Drago. Any questions? May I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the extension one year of the date. I don't have the date.
Uh, August 23, 2023.
I'd like to make a motion to grant the extension to August 23, 2024.
May I have a second? Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yep.
Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the board.
The next two cases are companion cases. Uh, they were reliefless expired in November of last year and they're requesting a second extension. Uh, the first case, BOA 914212 with the address of 79 Devon Street. The second case, BOA 734154 with the address of 14 Grenson Street. Are the applicant or the representative present?
Sorry, there is a raised hand here. One second. May I lay? Is that you? May I look? Are you looking at? Is this your case?
Uh, she mentioned, yeah.
Okay, you're muted. Can you hear us? Just gonna try to make you a panelist. I'm not sure. All right, I did unmute you. Um, once you become a panelist, you can unmute yourself. I'm not sure if you're having sound issues, but you are. You do have the option to do that.
Hi, everyone.
Morning. Are you here for 14 Gresen and 79 Devon?
That's right.
Mm-hmm. Okay, can you identify yourself?
Yes, this is Mayeli de Lopez. I'm the chief operating officer for Project 77.
Okay, and why do you need the extension?
Yes, so, uh, good morning, everyone, but I'm sharing, members of the board. It was, is with great pleasure that I come to you to request this extension. Uh, in this particular project, at the time that we started, unfortunately, a few months later, it hit the pandemic, and as a company, we had to choose between putting all of our efforts in helping the tenants to find government assistance and put them back on their feet. We basically hired a whole team to dedicate to safeguard our tenants that were like more than half of them affected by the pandemic. Also, we had a shortage of workers at the time that wouldn't allow us to complete the project on a timely manner. That's why we requested the second, the first, um, extension. And then also, um, we had a supply chain issue that has been resolved as of now. We have a team ready to work in the project. Uh, again, like by the time of the pandemic, we were like highly affected by tenants not paying rent, and that definitely makes a significant impact on our financial possibilities to carry the two projects. But we are in a better position now. We are very happy that we were able to overcome like all the problems that the pandemic bring to us, and we are trying to create like more affordable housing with a focus on green technologies such as high-efficiency air conditioners. We are having slated the home, and we believe that this can be a beautiful home that will bring development, um, to the community.
And what do you need an extension till?
We are gonna start, uh, work on the process right, uh, on the project right away. We already have the team in place that will carry the two projects.
Mm-hmm, and so what, what are you seeking an extension for until, is, is the, I don't know, Javier, one year from, when it expired would be November of this year, but that sounds special.
Yeah, Madam Chair. One year will be perfect. If I suggest it would be from today's date of August 8.
Okay, thank you. Uh, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to grant the extension to August 8, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yep.
Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
The next five cases are companion cases. They are experiencing unanticipated delays in soil testing, and MOH is assisting with this testing. Um, with that information, I'll read these into the record. Uh, the first is BOA 8344506 with the address of 98 Magdolia Street. Uh, next case, BOA 834511 with an address of 100 Magdolia Street. The next case, BOA 834542 with an address of 162 Magdolia Street. Next case is BOA 834493 with an address of 164 Magdolia Street. And next case is BOA 834501 with the address of 170 Magdolia Street. And final case is BOA 834505 with the address of 79 Felon Street. Is the applicant or the representative present?
Hi, this is Kendra Rome, present. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good morning, members of the board and Madam Chairperson. This is, uh, I'm the applicant, I'm also the developer. Um, this project was a sister project to another project that's under construction right now on Magdolia Street. And Woodford Streets were at about 90% completion on that project. So originally, when that was designated for both of these projects through the, um, Neighborhood Homes Initiative and the DND, um, we decided to bifurcate the projects due to the lender having, um, funding mitigation constraints um, to not fund the whole project at once. So we split them in two. Unfortunately, it was in the middle of the pandemic when this was done, and we are looking for a year extension, albeit I believe the extent, the original extensions of these projects has expired as well. So I'm looking for 12 months from today. I'm hoping to get permits in hand by the spring of 2024 for this project. Um, now that we're wrapping up the Magdolia-Whitford project, the lender will be ready to start funding for this. And we've had a lot of delays due to the fact that, you know, Roxbury is sitting on conglomerate. We've been chipping and digging and dealing with a lot of very heavily contaminated soil, which is unnecessarily expensive and delayed the process. Um, so, but we'd like to keep pushing forward. If you would, uh, grant the extensions here, we'd be very grateful.
Thank you, Ms. Rome. May I have a, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for extension until August 8, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yep.
Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
The next case, uh, the relief expired of March of 2023, but is the second request of the applicant. Uh, that case is BOA 1033474 with the address of Juan Highgate Street. And I believe Attorney Jeff Drago is here, the representative.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with a business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the applicant of Juan Highgate, uh, this was, uh, actually part of a larger Article 80 project that was approved. Um, and we went before this board and received an extension before those other, because this is one of four different buildings with companion cases. So we got the extension for the other buildings in March of 2023 that would run to 2024. Just because of an oversight of ours, we forgot this particular address along with the other permits. Uh, this project will likely be underway in the next six months. Part of it has already started. It's being phased in. Uh, so we are seeking an extension that, if possible, could run with the ones that were granted for the companion cases.
And Mr. Drago, you're seeking an extension to March 13, 2024. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Ma'am Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the extension until March 13, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yep.
Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
The last case for extensions, uh, also was reliefless expired from November of 2022, but this is the first request for an extension. Would be, uh, BOA of 1047748, and the address is 3992 to 3996 Washington Street. And I believe this is Jeff Drago.
Uh, thank you, Javier. Uh, again, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with a business address of 11 Beacon, uh, here on behalf of the applicant. This was also an Article 80 approved project for 18 units and one commercial space, um, for this project. It was approved and signed back in November of 2020 by the board. Um, obviously, that was right in the heart of COVID. Uh, there were some just delays in general, but they, they did actually get their certificate of approval from the BPDA and immediately started to work towards the permitting process. They pulled a demo permit and a foundation permit, which right now, there's a foundation in the ground. Um, what happened was there was some contamination on the site. When they submitted their full set of plans, that contamination changed where the stacker parking system would go. Due to that, uh, the plans were put on hold, and that's where there was just some confusion on their part, where they were already operating. They were under the impression that the permits were still valid. Uh, come to find out that they had expired, um, uh, later that year. So we are seeking, uh, an extension. They are ready to start immediately because they were already under, working under the, um, uh, at-risk permit that was granted to them.
So, Mr. Drago, when are you seeking an extension until?
So we're, I mean, we're gonna pull out permanent right away, but, you know, so, so we could start it from when it expired. That's not an issue if the board sees fit or, uh, from right now, either one is fine.
Um, Madam Chair, I'd recommend just to extend it from today's date to 2023.
Okay. Any questions? If not, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, grant the extension to August 8, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yep.
Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good day.
Uh, I'll now pass it over to Secretary Stenbridge to read the case we filed.
Thank you, Secretary Stenbridge. Um, we have one board final object case scheduled for 9:30 AM. Case is BOA 1419480. The address is 18 Fabian Street. Is the applicant, I believe, Mr. Small, or the representative present?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, have a business address of 51 Dobson Road, Brent Tree, Mass. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking to remove the board's proviso of BPDA design review for this project. And I'll give, go through a quick, quick and brief history of the project and how we got here. Um, we applied for a permit to erect a three-family dwelling on a vacant lot. Um, inspectional services department issued the permit as an allowed use. The building was built. After the building was built, uh, the plans examiner came back and cited us for one violation, which was lot, lot area insufficient. We came back to this board on February the 7th, 2023, and this board approved the project with BPDA design review. Um, however, again, the building was already built. So we went to the BPDA to do design review, and they have declined a new design review because the building is built. Um, so we are here today seeking a removal of that proviso so that ISD can properly issue the occupancy permit for the building.
All right. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion.
I'm sorry. I missed the motion.
Approval.
Okay, thank you. Uh, all right, and Mr. Valencia, second, and Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Next, we go to building code hearing, not scheduled for 9:30. We have case BOA 1489621 with the address of 50B Street. Is the applicant and/or the representative present?
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sorry for my camera not working today. I'm not sure what's going on. Um, I'm the architect. This is Eric Zacherson, um, 9 Sackville Street in Charlestown, the architect for 50B Street. Um, the project is basically, it was before us, before the board a few months ago for zoning violations, uh, to add a roof deck, or add two roof decks for the two top, uh, tenants in this building. They, um, had proposed, uh, extending one of the stairs direct, one of the building stairs directly to the top and using that as, that headhouse as their access. This, um, proviso on the decision, the decision was, um, was granted, but with the proviso that we've changed to a roof hatch. Um, so we've gone back and done that, but given the height of the building, the roof hatch is a, requires a building code variance. Yeah, these are the old drawings with the headhouse. Um, given the fact that, uh, there was that proviso, we reissued drawings with a hatch, and those went to the, uh, to ISD. ISD issued the building code refusal letter. Um, so we would need a variance to do a hatch on this building because it's four stories.
Got it. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval for a building code relief to allow for the roof hatch.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we move into the hearings for 9:30 AM. First is case B.
Any deferrals or withdrawals?
Yes, um, thank, thank you. Uh, at this time, we'll request any, uh, last, any request for withdrawals or deferrals from the 9:30 AM timer.
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. 229-233 Bowden Street.
Okay, that would be case BOA 1484717. The address of 229-233 Bowden Street. Um, would you care to explain why, Mr. Small?
Sure. Again, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, business address on 51 Dobson Road. We are here today seeking a deferral of this case because we need to go back and meet with the community group one more time in September.
Okay, Javier, what's next available?
Uh, Attorney Small, is it, uh, September, mid-September or late September?
I would say late September, just to be safe.
Okay, so, um, there's availability for September 26 for the next one or October 17?
Um, why don't we do September 26?
Okay.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to defer to September 26, 2023.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
See you then.
Mr. Stenbridge, can I get any one Woodlon, please?
Uh, there would.
Last case. Last case of this 9:30?
That's correct.
Thank you, folks. That would be case BOA 1341023. The address of 81 Woodlon Street. Um, sorry if someone was speaking, uh, the applicant and/or the representative present.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Richard Lynn's, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of Petition or Highline Development. Uh, we are requesting a brief deferral for this matter. There is a notice, uh, issue with respect to the side yard violation that we would need to have corrected, so we've requested, uh, renotice on this matter.
Okay. Javier, what's, uh, available?
Yeah, that would be the same day as September 26 is what.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to defer to September 26.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yep.
Ms. Berberaza.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. See you then.
Thank you very much.
We'll now return to the hearing scheduled for 9:30 AM.
I actually had one, one deferral, Mr. Stenbridge.
Uh, there would.
Yes, sir. Mr. Lacass.
And it's the first case on the West 29 Southern Road.
That being case BOA 1199457. The address of 29 Southern Road. If you would care to explain, okay?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, 70 Albany Street in Boston, running for the applicant. As a result of a, uh, fairly extensive community review process, there have been some changes made to the plans, um, with input from various groups, including the Aberdeen Historic Commission. Uh, and those plans need to be submitted to ISD for review and reissuance before the. And those plans need to be submitted to ISD for review and reissuance before the board may hear and base their decision on the revised plan, so we're seeking a deferral to the next available date, please.
Thank you. Javier?
To go to, I would suggest either October 17th or October 31st, it has to be reviewed by plans examiners. May I have your card?
If we could do 1017?
Okay.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to October 17th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, see you then.
Thank you so much.
Any further requests for withdrawals or withdrawal? Hearing none, move on to case DOA 1422753. The address being 9 to 11 Holton Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. With me today is Brian McGrath from Glen Shane Properties and the architect Alita Elba from Chuen Associates. This is a proposal to change the occupancy from a three-family dwelling to a five-family dwelling with parking for eight vehicles by way of a renovation and an addition. The addition will extend the footprint of the building by approximately 45 feet and five inches long and 30 feet wide while maintaining the existing height of the original structure. Four parking spaces will be located at grade under the addition, as well as another four parking spaces in the rear of the property. Floors two and three of the addition above the parking will contain two two-bedroom units ranging from 1,038 square feet to 1,201 square feet. The existing structure will be renovated to contain three units. One unit, which will be a two-bedroom, approximately 1,133 square feet, will be located on the first floor. Another unit, which will be a three-bedroom, approximately 1,122 square feet, will be located on the second floor. And finally, the last unit, which will be a two-bedroom, approximately 1,241 square feet located on the dirt floor of that existing structure. The basement, which was previously containing livable space, which we believe was an illegal unit, and this was originally, the new owner is actually converting over to this space, rather than having a livable space and being an illegal unit, converting it over to mechanical and storage space for all those units. This proposal is located within a 3F 4,000 sub-district, which triggers a violation of the code for use. We also have three other violations associated. We have a lot area insufficient. The existing lot area here is 7,103 square feet, and the zoning code calls for 10,000 square feet. FAR, point A is what is allowed, and the proposal is calling for a point 9.7. We have a usable open space violation. 650 square feet is compliant per unit, and the proposal calls for approximately 248 square feet per unit. One thing that I think is worth notating, the pre-existing open space as it calls for was 395 square feet. So again, that was a pre-existing non-conforming issue. At this point, I'm gonna pause and turn it over to the board for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I take public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Caitlin Stapleton from Council Murphy's office. The applicant has worked with the community throughout the process and listened to the abutters. They removed the basement unit, added more parking, and increased the amount of green space. Because of this, the council would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza, Austin Bright Liaison. The applicant for 911 Holton Street had an abutters meeting on April 11th. Abutters president had concerns about bestest mitigation and basement space. You should have, the board also should have received a letter from the Austin Civic Association's President Anthony Disidoro earlier this morning regarding the project. The Austin Civic Association reflected the concerns of the neighbors and is deferring to the judgment given the concern about the public notice for the project. I believe Tony Disidoro is on to testify as well, but the concern is essentially that the purpose did not reflect the intended change of occupancy of the addition. At this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan, City Council Judge Michael Flaherty, Council Director in Sports.
Okay. May I have two raised hands, Val, and then caller 617787. Val, can you, consent, can you let us know your name and if you're in support or opposition, and address?
Thank you, thank you. I have a letter, 24 Holton Street. It calls out, it doesn't address the requirements for a variance. When it purchased the property as a two-family, it was an abutment, it was a four-family. It met the requirements for a variance in terms of substantial hardship, because of substantial action that's in the name of it. Everyone was trying to term this neighborhood into Manhattan. It's a two-family, it's purchased as a two-family, it stays a two-family.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And then, Tony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Disidoro, representing the Austin Civic Association. I just logged on, so I'm assuming you are discussing 9 to 11 Holton?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to reiterate, we just sent in a letter. The proponent has been responsive in the sense that there was an illegal apartment in the basement of the complex, and we had asked that that be removed, and that be used just for mechanicals and storage, and the proponents agreed to do that, reducing the unit count from six to five. The confusion with us, and it really, it really is very misleading, the biggest concern that a lot of local abutters who are very active in the community had with the project was the density, taking of open space, the parking, how they did it under the addition, but more importantly, increasing the unit count from three to five units. If you notice in the public announcement on the agenda, there is no mention of a change of occupancy. The only thing that is mentioned is putting an addition onto the property and doing some internal renovations and remodeling and what have you. I really believe that that is a huge disservice to anybody in the community who has real concerns about the density and the number of units for that neighborhood, to not see a public declaration that that is still the direction of the proposal. I, again, I'm coming in late, I don't know if the proponents have decided to keep it as a three-family, or whether they plan to proceed with their plans to go from a three to a five-unit building, but there's no indication on that as to the public announcement. So I would, I would hope that if that's the case, that we would defer and allow this proposal to be re-advertized again correctly, indicating that not only is it an addition, but it's a change of occupancy from three to five units. Thank you.
Any other raised hands?
Six, caller 617787? Send a request, unmute you.
Yes. Yeah, I already, I already testified.
That will be Val, okay, thank you.
Thank you, no additional raised hands.
Madam Chair, if I could just respond to?
Yes, please.
On this, so that was, so we had multiple abutters meetings on this, and that was one issue that was raised to us. So we did fix that correction as far as the advertisement, and Mr. Mendoza can confirm that we voluntarily hosted a second abutters meeting fixing that advertisement. There was no ill intentions of the actual language that was used when filing this application. So again, we did reissue the abutters flyer, hosted a second abutters meeting, as well as met with Mr. Disidoro's organization as well, and those meetings were actually informed. I get that the ZDA may not have had the correct language, but again, that language was resubmitted.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have one question regarding the amount of parking space. So for five units, you are proposing eight, eight spaces for cars? And I just find it to be taking up a lot of the open space with the added density on the property. Can you, can you discuss why eight parking spaces?
Yes, so the, one of the concerns that we did hear from the abutters was actual parking spaces. So we wanted to be compliant with what was actually being requested of us. So we did provide, we were able to provide for the eight parking spaces. That was the whole reasoning behind it.
That was requested from the community, or from?
Yes, to provide more parking.
For visitors?
Well, it's gonna be, those parking spaces will be allocated to the units itself.
We have five units, so how do you, you have five units, so how would you go about
Yeah, so we have.
The additional three?
Yep, so there's four two-bedrooms, and there's one three-bedroom unit in here. So they'll all be divided as on a needed basis, depending upon the occupants.
So it hasn't been determined which of those three additional parking spaces would go to those five units?
Not as of yet.
Okay, thank you, no further question.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion to approve with the BPDA review.
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
I'm gonna go no, just for the amount of open spaces taking up for dedicated parked cars.
Okay, Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Ms. Weewell?
I will vote no as well due to the open space and amount of parking.
Okay, so that motion does not carry. Is there another motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion of approval with a proviso that BPADA does a site plan review to allow for addition, to allow for open space and to reduce the amount of exterior spaces for cars.
Sorry, who is doing the review? I missed that.
APDA.
APDA, okay.
For site planning.
Got it, okay. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case DOA 1446390. The address being 108 to 108 C Austin Street. Is the applicant and/or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Secretary. Members, members of the board, Ryan Spitz, Adams &amp; Maranti, with the business address of 168 H Street, South Boston, first floor. Again, with me today is Brian McGrath from Glen Shane Properties, as well as the architect Alita Elba from Chuen Associates. A few of you board members may recall this proposal was here in front of you in the past year, and we were asked a few things. This was denied with El Prejudice, and asked to reduce the massing of the building, increase the green space, and add walkways for the left side of the building. This is exactly what has been done with this proposal. The current site consists of an existing, dilapidated three-family in a garage in the rear lot, which will be demolished. This proposal is to erect a new three-story building with four townhomes, ownership townhomes, with seven parking spaces, four garage spaces, and three visitor parking spaces. Parking will be accessed by utilizing an existing curb cut in a driveway. This is a 9,000-square-foot lot with a total of 9,100 square feet of living area. This proposal is located within a 2F 5,000 sub-district. The four townhomes will be approximately 1,800 square feet. All unit layouts will mirror each other, with the first floor consisting of a garage for one car, an office space in the rear of the garage. Second floor would consist of a kitchen, living area, and a bedroom, along with the balcony, approximately two feet, eight inches by eight feet. And the third floor would consist of two bedrooms. The proposed FAR in this location, for this proposal is a point 8.8, and a point 6 is what is allowed by code. Building height is under code, as we are providing 33.5 feet. 30 feet is what is required, but the stories is excessive. We're proposing three stories, and 2.5 is what is required, but it's consistent with this neighborhood. Front yard, we have violation, we're proposing 16 feet, two inches, 20 feet is what's required by the code. One thing I want to highlight is that the existing structure is non-compliant, as that current structure is at 6 feet, 4 inches. And lastly, we have a side yard, we do have the side yard violation. We have, we're compliant, we're compliant on the right-hand side, as we are 22 feet, but we are in violation on the left-hand side, as we're proposing three feet. Again, that, we are separated from a driveway on the left-hand side to the next dwelling. We're approximately about 15 feet from that abutting structure. And the last violation you'll see is that our main entrances, we have a violation because they're not directly on the street front, they're being accessed from the right-hand side via the driveway where the parking garage is. There is one entrance for the first unit closest to the street on Austin. As you can see, that entrance is on the front of the building there. So again, three of those things, I just want to go back and notate for you. When this was denied was decreasing the massing of the building. We originally had five units, we decreased that maximum, brought it down to four units. We increased the actual green space, and again, we added the walkways on the left-hand side of the building, which were recommended. So at this point, I'm gonna pause for any questions or comments from the board.
All right, thank you, Mr. Spitz. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I only have a question regarding the tree that's rendered in front of the property. Is that tree on your property? With that large canopy?
Yes, I know the one that you're talking about. I believe it may be, but I'm gonna direct towards Alita Elba, who is the architect that is with us today. I think she may be able to provide more insight on that specific tree itself.
Yes, I believe that tree is in our property.
Okay, and do you believe?
And we're keeping that, we're gonna keep the tree, yes.
Okay, because it's very close, so with the amount of construction, it'll be critical to try to preserve, to preserve that tree. I know that's one of the comments that the BPDA had regarding preservations of the, of the trees, but it only seems like the large one's right in front versus the rear, just from my colleagues. But I do, I do appreciate the improvements on this project in regards to balancing open space and, and park spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. The tree actually, just FYI, does look like it's to the right of that driveway on the right, so it may be the property next to it, but neither here nor there. Any, any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza, Neighbors, excuse me, Austin Bright Liaison, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We have received two letters of opposition for the project at one way, Austin, which were forwarded to the board. The board should have those on the file. Held in the abutters meeting on April 26th, wherein concerns were expressed about historical preservation. We did also have a resident of the broader community, but not a director of other, a resident who expressed opposition. The Austin, the Austin Civic Association sent a letter this morning with support should have on file regarding the project. And their, the Civic Association President, Tony Disidoro, should also be on to testify as well, but the letter expressed the proposal of the ACA with the proviso that no building code relief be granted, and that the units be older occupied. At this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Tony, go ahead.
Yeah, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Disidoro, representing the Austin Civic Association. This is a project that began, as the proponent was saying, as a, I believe, five-unit rental building with some serious design issues and density issues. And as was noted, the proponent has been very responsive to the community, and the feedback that they've gotten, we believe that this four-unit condo townhouse project is a, is a huge improvement over the original, and we would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Okay, and just see here, and that was all set for hands, thank you.
Okay. Great, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review on the site planning to reduce the curb cut to allow for the preservation of that large tree in the front.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, for the next case, I'm going to defer to attorney Salves, um, three, seven. With that, I'll read them to the record first. That being case BOA one four six two one one nine. The address of seventeen, seventeen forty-two to seventeen forty-eight Rochester Avenue. Attorney Salve?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. I, whoever's name is, nix is nix, I'm not sure if he's here, but, uh, I, this case needs to be deferred to August twenty-ninth. It was advertised to the incorrect abutters and we re-advertised for that date.
Okay.
So all we need is a motion to defer to August twenty-ninth.
Excellent. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer to August twenty-ninth.
May I have a second?
Second. Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'll interrupt. The next scheduled hearings are at eleven, so I believe we need to take a forty-minute break. I think it's ten twenty right now. We'll have to re-continue at eleven.
Okay, see you all then.
I was hoping for an early finish, okay?
Well, that's, well, yeah.
Okay, see you later.
All right, see you later.